Got grades, or whether you failed classes, or whatever, everybody's going. So, congratulations. But, you know, for some of those families, it's the, it's the one that they all get to participate in, and the one that they know, and they may not get another chance.
You know, there was a really interesting piece on Facebook that people from nursing homes were telling about their life, how old they were, and when they graduated, a lot of them had when they should have graduated. But, back then, they only made it to eighth grade because of the depression.
Yep, I can remember my great-grandma telling me, "I made it to ninth grade in school," or was.
My uncle, George St. Hart, he, he only made it to eighth grade because his dad died. He had, he had all of a sudden become another house.
Yep.
And he had to do a job.
Different world, different world.
All right, we're ready whenever you're ready.
He's gonna be late.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting this September 9th, 2019. We will call this meeting to order with five board members present. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 5-0. Moving on to the consent agenda. Looks like it's all minutes and financial reports. If somebody would like to propose, we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. That also passes 5-0. We do not have any comments from the public tonight. Moving down to Section 5.01, the O R C refinance.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
My name is Adrian Serene. I'm with the law firm of Q-Tac Rock. We're the district's special tax counsel and bond counsel when bonds are issued. Here tonight to report on the refunding of the 2010 certificates of participation. Those were issued originally in 2010 to pay for the financing of the Gopert Building back here for the Ottawa Recre-- uh, for the O R C. There was an opportunity discussed last month with Dustin Avi of Piper Jaffray to refund those certificates of participation because some savings could be realized. Basically, a lower interest rate, a much lower interest rate, as it turns out, could be realized so the district could save some money for the O R C, who actually pays the debt service on those C O Ps. Here tonight to report on the results. So, I believe a lot of the documents that we have submitted have already been circulated or available to the Board for review. And as soon as I'm finished, happy to answer any questions with respect to any of those documents. The, the result of the refunding was very good. There were six bids from banks. The winning bid was InTrust Bank with the headquarters out of Wichita. Their rate was 2.410%. That's a pretty significant savings. For the net present value savings between now and the end of the lease, which is September 1st, 2031, the total savings is $76,728.21. And just as Dustin mentioned last month, that $76,000 does take into account the cost of issuance. So, there's a, Q-Tac Rock has a fee, and Piper Jaffray has a fee, and there are other fees involved. That's, that is not included in that cost. So, that $76,728 is actual savings. The way that that savings is realized is that the Ottawa Recreational Commission, Recreation Commission, rather, they enter into a sublease, or in this case, an amended sublease, and they'll make the, the debt service payments twice a year, just like they're doing now. So, March 1st and also September 1st of each year. The term of those payments will remain the same. So, right now, they're, they're scheduled to go out until September 1st of 2031, and that will remain the same. They'll still be September 1st of 2031, under the amended and restated sublease that was in the packet. There's an expected close date, then, for the transaction of October 1st. So, it's, it's coming up pretty close. We've done, we've already circulated all of the documents for everyone to review, and happy to receive comments on those. We've worked pretty closely with the Ottawa Recreation Commission, and also with Terry here on behalf of the district. And since I have the floor, I'll thank her, because we do call her frequently and ask questions, and very much appreciate the prompt responses we always get back from her. And the same goes for Glenda over at the, at the O R C, for what it's worth. So, with respect to that, we are on track to close. We've heard back from InTrust Bank, and, and they're very pleased with the way the transaction's moving along. So, everybody's very happy with how it's going. I just came from a meeting next door, a special meeting, in fact, of the O R C, where they approved the amended and, or a resolution that allows them to enter into the amended and restated sublease. So, right now, there's a sublease between the district and the O R C. That sublease will go away, and this amended and restated sublease will take its place. It's basically the vehicle through which the O R C makes the payments, the rent payments that would be due up until September 1st of 2031. So, they had several questions, but ultimately did, did sign that resolution, and it passed unanimously. That brings us to the resolutions before the district this evening. That resolution would authorize the Board of Education of USD 290 to enter into an amended and restated sublease, as I was describing, and also enter into lease, and a, a base lease, rather, and a lease-purchase transaction, this time with InTrust Bank, and not with the trustee who was Security Bank of Kansas City last time. So, and then, I guess, one other document. The resolution would authorize the district to file a federal tax certificate and other closing documents in connection with the transaction. The base lease and the lease purchase agreement that would start on October 1st of this year, they're as identical as we could make them to the existing documents. In other words, in 2010, when the certificates of participation were issued, there was also a base lease and a lease purchase agreement at that time. We had to update those documents because there's no longer a trustee. There's no longer certificates of participation. So, there are some changes to the documents. But, for the most part, as much as we could keep the responsibilities of all of the parties the same, we did so. So, the resolution before the district this evening would allow, would authorize the district to enter into those documents, as I laid them out. And it's, it's by entering into those documents that the O R C and the district, but ultimately, the O R C can recognize that $76,728 savings. So, with that, I, I would answer any questions that anybody has with respect to the documents or the rest of the procedure.
Terry, do you have any concerns?
Nope.
Okay.
We'll tell you all that we've worked through this for the past three, four, or five weeks, Dustin and, and everybody, and, and made sure that O R C believes that this is the right thing to do. And certainly, they feel good about it. And the savings of around $80,000 is fairly substantial to them, and something that they're looking forward to. So, I think all in all, we're ready to make this happen and do the best we can for O R C. And again, for the taxpayers of our community, get something great at now a lesser value.
Any further discussion? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the resolution, authorizing and approving the execution of documents in connection with the O R C lease-purchase agreement?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to Section 5.02. Dr. Cops will present the new salary schedule for teachers.
All right. Today is a pretty good day, because I think we have a really good offer, and, and the teachers ratified it with overwhelming support of a new base salary, a new salary schedule for, for our staff. One of the things that I do want to point out is that we get awfully close to the $42,000 base salary at 41,760, or 761. And we also get to over $72,000 in 17 years with multiple master's degrees. So, this is really a great salary schedule for our staff. And ultimately, I think last year, we had an average teacher salary of a little over $60,000 per teacher, and certainly, that's gonna go up with this. So, a great salary schedule for our staff, and we're really excited to be able to provide this opportunity and the work that we did together to, to ensure that we could do this for our teachers. So, salary schedule is, as it is, a 4% increase on the base, with typically 5% across most cells, and in some cells, getting to 6, 8, 10, and 12%, depending on where you're at, moving from one cell, wherever you're at last year, to where you would be at this year on this contract. Any questions about salaries?
Okay, we're ready to make a motion.
Would you need to take action on this tonight? Is there a motion?
I, I move that we approve the salary matrix as proposed, and very happy to be able to offer our staff a 4% increase.
Second?
And before we vote on that--
Madam President, I am gonna excuse myself in this room.
Thank you.
Just where I was going.
I know. I'm beat to it.
Yes, you did. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the salary matrix as proposed. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 4-0.
Mr. Kane can come back down if he can hear up there. I do want to, before we get to the negotiated agreement and teacher contracts, thank all the work that Linda and Brian do, as well as those sitting back here on our negotiating team. The process has really been very seamless, and, and I think together, we've, we've provided great opportunities for the employees of our district. So, thank you all to, to each and every person that did the work on this contract.
So, I make a motion, we approve it. Is that what we need to do, or does it come out of committee that way? Do we have to do that?
So, the negotiated agreement, you should have all seen it. The changes were in red. I don't know that there's a lot that we need to, to discuss. The, the biggest piece of it is obviously the teacher salary piece, but the others are not insignificant either. But, we've been talking about these things as a board for the last four months, so there shouldn't be any surprises there. If we don't need to have any discussion, we can approve and move forward.
Is there a second? She, she made a motion.
She did.
I did. I didn't know if I needed to, because it was coming out as a recommendation from you guys, but I don't know.
Well, I'll, I'll happily second that motion.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 5-0.
Now, before we end this, I really wanna to especially, I mean, I wanna thank the entire team, but I really wanna thank Megan O'Neill for her incredible note-taking ability. And, exactly, and to succinctly condense what we've said into a understandable sentence.
It truly is a team effort, and Megan does a, a lot of great things. And, and most notably, she keeps us on track, I think, as, as she's sitting back there. I'm talking about her like she's not in the room. But I think it's a difficult task to take 10 people sitting around a table, all of them kind of throwing out ideas, and to be the person that kind of brings everybody back together and makes the succinct statement about what it was that we've discussed, takes a special person, and Megan does a great job, and, and certainly is an integral part of the team as we, as we develop, again, a great negotiated agreement for, for our district.
Okay, with that, we will move on to Section 5.04, which is principal contracts. Dr. Cops?
Okay, so, principal contracts, as always, have, have worked off the base salary increase that we provided teachers, and we'll continue to do that. So, a 4% increase on all admin salaries. The difference here is that we would propose two-year contracts for assistant superintendents and building principals, and that would include our five building principals, as well as our two assistant superintendents. The two assistant superintendents already have contracts. The reason that they're here, or they already have two-year contracts. The reason I lump them in here is so that we can roll them over altogether, and not have to, not have to do them independently. So, the, the five prince, building principals would be on a two-year rolling contract as well. It would work very similar to mine, that at this point, they would have a two-year contract. Next year, we would determine if they would continue for the single year following that, or whether we would roll that for another two years. And then, of course, in the, in the other piece of this, there was an increase in salary for two administrators that, that you should have all recognized, and we want to make sure that that's included in this as well, for their superior work and their lack of salary to begin with, and brings them up to where they should be.
Any questions or discussion?
It's not that I don't appreciate anything that our admin does. I just start getting a little cold feet on doing more contracts when we've already sent a, seen a decrease in student numbers, which eventually is gonna decrease funding as well, too, down the line. And I just, I don't want us to have to go backwards.
Well, and a couple of things, and I certainly, I certainly understand and appreciate that. We will never be able to go backwards in salaries.
I'm not saying salaries, but someday, we may have to say we can't do two-year contracts, too.
We, we may have to. But when that time comes, that's a, that's a conversation for us to have. But, the, the salaries that we have in place, every administrator that we have in our district would be given a two-year threshold to work through their, to their contract to begin with. And ultimately, at the end of that, that initial two years, if they weren't doing the things that we were expecting them to do, we would move on from that. This two-year contract, the way that it's set up, gives us some ability, at the end of the first year, to put in place a plan of improvement, much like we would do with a teacher. So, these are the things that we need, these are the things that we want to see from you. If we're not, at the end of the second year, we would be moving on from that contract. We are well within our rights to do so. If we do like what we're doing, and we do like what we're seeing, then the other things that it provides is an opportunity for them to really feel appreciated, and have the, the opportunity to continue to push our staff and do the things that we need to do. We're asking our principals to do a lot of things, or a lot of initiatives that take place in our district. And having the wherewithal from our board to know that they are appreciated, and they are going to be able to continue in that push, is a big piece of what we want to accomplish here. They are certainly worth, we have great administrators in this district, we have great teachers in this district. I think it's important for us to recognize both sides at this point.
And I agree with all of that, by not slighting our admin at all. I'm just saying that it's a financial thing, too, that's to consider.
Yep, so, one of the things that, and I had a conversation with, with Mr. Norris about this, in terms of the legalities of a two-year contract, just to make sure that we, we understood. The opportunity for us to, to release from contract for cause is very different than the opportunity for us to release from contract because we want a non-renewal. And so, we have the ability to release for cause within a two-year contract with, under the law. So, it protects us in being able to do so. The non-renewal piece is something different. From a, from a money standpoint, we should be able to have the conversation, we will have it tonight, to be able to look forward multiple years to know whether or not we can sustain two-year contracts. So, it should never catch us off-guard. Our, our numbers should be able to verify to us that, yep, we've got this, we gotta think about this coming forward. So, maybe in two years, we pull back to make sure we go year to year. And those are conversations that I can have with our admin team when they arise.
So, and this legal deal probably works like mine on construction contracts, cause and convenience. You have cause, then there's a step back to convenience, means I'm paying you, like I'm saying, hey, I'm laying you off, I have to pay you out.
Yes, yeah. So, there's a difference if we want to separate from, from our contract, and they've not completed the contract just on our terms, and there would be some conversation about severance in doing so. If it's a causal situation, and they've broken one of our policies, then that is something different.
Yeah. Yeah, here, here, my take on it is, is considerably different. Every building requires a principal, right? No matter, no matter where we're at financially, they're gonna require a principal. I think if we've got good principals, we should show them the appreciation we have by giving them those two-year contracts, because it doesn't matter, in the end. We're still gonna have a principal in the building.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we ask our principals to work hard, to be the educational leaders of their building. They work long hours and, and do an awful lot for us. Plus, if you, if you look statewide, our principal salaries are, are actually pretty low. They really are. And, and I think a two-year contract is, is a great thing that we can offer our principals. We have a whiz-bang team right now, and, and we need to do everything we can to keep them.
But, sorry, I'm late. So, if you've covered this, my apologies for making you go back.
Covered it. No, I'm just--
Well, then, I'll just sit here and drink my Diet Coke. Thank you very much. I, I guess I took a different point of view, but I, I ultimately am going to support it. As far as I know, the board doesn't really hire and fire the building and admin anyway. So, sitting around talking about that, what we do or not do, I'm not so sure that it really pertinent to the board. So, you know, last, last I knew, we hadn't ever hired or fired admin. So, I guess my thought is, as long as there's mutual protections, then, you know, the board really doesn't have much say in it.
Yeah, well, the, the board say is that the board has to approve all contracts. So, it would have to be something that the, that, and which is why you have it in front of you today. If there's not board support, then certainly, we need to look at it, at something different. I think that, that we have to think about what a decision like this means to those administrators that are sitting back there, and the support that it shows them, and doing the hard work that we ask them to do each and every day. What we talked about prior to you being here was that we, I've had conversations with Mike Norris about both the removal for cause versus the removal for separation, just in terms of, we no longer want them under contract. There are protections on both sides, and I think that, again, what we would do with any principal, assistant principal or building principal, would be that they would have two years to show us their worth and value. I don't think we've ever had a principal that we have said, after the one year, nope, sorry, let's, let's move on. We want to give them the opportunity. We understand that coming into this district, there are some, some things, much like with new teachers, there's an, an opportunity to learn and grow, an opportunity to learn new policies, and op-- there's so many things that, that have to take place in coming in and transitioning to the principalship, that they're going to get two years anyways. They're gonna, we're going to give them the opportunity and put things in place to allow their growth and show them, and, and help them become great principals. If at the end of that first year, we are not seeing what we want to see, the conversation with them would be, we're not rolling over your contract. Plan of improvement is in place, just like we would a teacher. We put these things in there so that we start to build upon their skills. If we see that growth, then we give the other contract, again, a one-year extension. If we see what we want to see over the course of time, we go back to a two-year contract for them. These are conversations that are difficult for me to have. They're, they shouldn't be difficult for our board to have, because ultimately, I'm gonna make the recommendation about what is best for our buildings, and what's best for our administrative staff in doing so. And so, the trust has to come back to me, that I'm gonna evaluate our principals in an appropriate way to ensure that we have the best in each of our buildings that we need to have.
I would just like to say one more time, I, I do appreciate yourself and them, and that I do trust you. I was just giving you how I feel about contracts.
Sure, and, and I appreciate the thoughts. I knew that this would be a, a topic of conversation, right, which is, which is why we've had it openly here. And ultimately, I, I understand where, where we come from.
I guess for me, it becomes an issue, the fact that we're going into an election year also, for the, and although we don't approve the hiring and firing of principals or anyone except the superintendent, it still is seemingly a vote of confidence, yes or no. And so, for me, if I was trying to do a lot of change that isn't comfortable for people, because we're trying a lot of different initiatives, and if I was also then thinking, I don't have to, I don't feel comfortable with where the board is, and if I'm being supported, then that makes it a double gut punch, kind of. And so, I, I don't know that I'd like to hang around for that.
Yeah.
So, that's just me.
But you're right, Harold, we don't hire or fire our principals, but this is our opportunity to give them our moral support.
Oh, I'm not saying don't support them, I'm just saying that it's more a function of administration, is all I was pointing out. So, I didn't say I was against it, I just was pointing out probably the obvious.
Well, I'm very excited that we get the opportunity to vote on this, because to have a superintendent who thinks so highly of his administrative staff, that he's coming to the board and saying, hey, I want two-year rolling contracts for these folks, because we think that they're so strong that, that they're going the direction that is leading us toward that vision that we have. I think that speaks volumes about what's being done. So, I'm appreciative to have the opportunity. Is there any further discussion before we take action? If not, would somebody like to make an action?
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve two-year rolling contracts for our building principals.
That's it. Okay.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. We are moving down to classified salaries.
All right, the next piece of this--
Oh.
It was all in there together.
Sorry, do we need to go back and--
Oh, was there a second part?
Well, the, the 4% increase for the salary.
Oh, okay, yes, absolutely. Is there a motion to, the, for the provision of the increase of admin director salaries by 4%?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 6-0 as well. And now, we'll move down to classified salaries.
Okay, so, the classified recommendation, if Dean can pull that up, is pretty substantial. And you see that we provide more for our returning staff, and then we increase starting pay in, in every area. Again, when we've had the opportunity to do the right things by our staff, I think it's important for us to do the right things by our staff, make sure that we're competitive against our neighbors. And I think this, this does a lot, not only for those that are currently here and saying thank you for the incredibly difficult work that they do every day, but also making us a more, a more recognizable option for anybody outside of our district possibly looking to relocate here for employment.
Now, this is an instance where really, you realize it does take a village to raise a child. And we all know that the secretary and custodian are the two most important people in the building. But also, I mean, it, it, the transportation, the people that get those kids on the bus, and maybe it's the first smile I see every day, these people are really important to our district.
Susan?
Can I ask you just a verbiage question? The transportation, it says change, does not include a change for the sitting rate.
Yep, so, the sitting--
They all sit on the bus.
So, the sitting rate is when you go to an event, and basketball game, you're driving to get the, the kids to the basketball game, and then you sit there for six hours during the basketball game. We pay them to sit, that's the sitting rate. And then, they get paid a driving rate. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep.
We pay a different rate if they have to stand.
Yes.
Exactly, there's standing room only--
There's a standing rate, and there's a sitting rate. We give them a chair, so we only have to pay the sitting rate.
Yeah, fold-up chair.
Ah, Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the classified salary changes.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 6-0.
All right, this one has been a year in the making. And it's been kind of a long journey to, to finally come to a conclusion with the, with the Lincoln Lot. But it is sold. We had our first $1,000 of earnest money sent to us yesterday. And all we need to do now is approve the actual purchase of the Lincoln Lot from Heartland to finalize this, and we will receive the other $74,000 as initially compen, as initially identified in this contract. And then, over the course of the next two years, we'll be looking at whether or not we can fill the two lots that would be given to us in this proposal. And if not, we'll be having different conversations about how we're compensated back for those lots.
Any questions or discussion on this?
Madam President, I move that we approve this contract.
Second?
Sell Lincoln.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 6-0, to approve the sale of the Lincoln Lot to Heritage Design and Build LLC for $75,000.
All right, let's talk about construction. So, you could scroll down there for me. Let's look at this spot right here. So, I'm gonna pull up this. Topic of conversation is really about what we're going to do with the remaining bond funds and monies associated with the bond. So, currently, we have a $63.16 million bond budget. That was what the entity gave us in this bond. We have allocated $63,153,173.89 to current projects, leaving us with $6,826.11 of uncounted-for funds in terms of how we choose to spend. Now, that is not, that is not the only monies we have left over. Some of those monies, if you, if you scroll down to the right-- Some of those monies, if you if you scroll down to the right, scroll up maybe to the right, you see the three million dollars, the one point three million dollars, and a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. These are monies that have still not yet been utilized. Right, so the three million dollars is Performing Arts Center. There is still some contingency dollars in here that most likely will not be spent and will come back down to that six. There is still contingency in pre-K, and there is still contingency in the playground. So not all of that money is going to be completely accounted for at the end. Some of it will come back down to here. Exactly how much, we yet to see, but there is some money that should still be out there. Dean, if you could scroll down a little more for me. This value right here is interest income, and if you look down to six hundred and forty-eight thousand sixty-four dollars and fifteen cents is total interest and revenue based off of the initial bond. So when we put out the sixty-three point one million dollars in bond money, we were able to get interest off of that money. And ultimately, we have been holding it in terms of what determining what we're going to use it for here in the end. Right, so we've got six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars sitting there that we can utilize. And then in the last the hailstorm that we had, the last one that was who was here took place right before we took the roofs off of the buildings. There was a one point five seven million dollar settlement off of that, which our bond was already paying for us to replace the roofs anyways. So we had this money, we paid four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for playgrounds at Lincoln, leaving us with a little over one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that interest money. So if you scroll down a little bit more, what we get here is our capital outlay cash balance. Okay, so we have about three point two million dollars in our capital outlay. We have our insurance proceeds. We have our anticipated expenditures, and we have what is our leftover in our anticipated revenues. Okay, so ultimately, what we have is about one point eight million dollars sitting there that we need to spend. It really needs to be one-time money. Right, remember, this is capital, so we can't use it for teacher salaries, can't do any of those things with it. And we need to make sure that it is one-time money because once it's gone, it's gone. It's not coming back. Right? So given that we may still have some monies coming back from contingencies for the three remaining projects, we might get a little closer to two million dollars. We need to think about how we're going to utilize that money. When we met last year about this time to talk about what we were going to do when we decided we were going to do a pre-K center, pre-K center wasn't the top of the list. Turfing athletic fields came right behind it. Okay, so what I wanted to do today was give you an understanding of what we have left, where monies are coming from. The actual bond money is about gone. Right, we've done a really great job of coming in under budget, doing a lot of things. We got a pre-K center out of it that we didn't think we were going to get. We got playgrounds out of it that we didn't think we were going to get. We've got a great investor in in Terry that got us interest money that we didn't necessarily think that we were going to get, and then some some great minds to make sure that insurance money pays out at the right time. It gives us a little more leverage than what we had had before. Right, so again, you don't have to take action tonight. What I want to make sure is that, one, there are no other ideas in terms of how we might want to spend the the last one point eight million dollars that we have. And two, if we still want turf, what we would do over the course of the next few weeks is have somebody come in and begin to give us estimates, not not request for proposals, but an estimate as to how much it would cost to turf both football and soccer so that we know where we're at and we don't get really excited about something and then have it come in over that threshold and have to say, no, we can't do this. Does that make sense? Any thoughts or questions open for discussion? Chris?
So if we've almost spent the bond money out of this one point eight, two million dollars, give or take, would we have to pay DLR a fee on that if we've already spent our money, the sixty-three million?
We wouldn't necessarily use DLR to do the turf. There are turf companies out there.
I know, but I didn't know if we had.
No, all of that is taken care of. It's wrapped into those budget amounts.
The reason I ask that is because we pay DLR for playground designs and stuff like that. I was making sure we weren't paying.
Wrapped in, yeah, it's wrapped into those budgets, so there isn't going to be anything coming back. Oops, we forgot about this. Yeah, I know. This is a scary part of the whole bond. I don't I don't really like this part, and I'm ready for it to be done.
You know, I I like the idea of looking at turfing the fields because, you know, I've I've had soccer players tell me how terrible that field is.
It's bad.
And and we've gone through and we've done some drainage work on it several years ago, and it still continues to be a problem.
Yes.
So I would be interested in knowing what it would cost to turf those fields.
And I I talked to you about this before. I'd be really interested in knowing turf versus grass as far as injuries go because you read a lot about ACLs being torn on turf more than grass.
Yep, we'll do some work there. I'm sure Brad has probably already gone through all of that.
But I I mean, I've I've been, you know, I I research it, but I'd like to know a little more.
One of the things that I think is important, I think we are the last school in the league that does not have turf facilities. Paola, Lewisburg, Udora, they've all recently added turf. Bonner Springs, I believe, recently added turf.
I think they redid theirs, but they've had it since ninety-nine.
Yeah, so they've so there are a couple of companies that are really really prominent. Like one is Kansas Turf and one is ATG. They spend a lot of time in our areas rolling around. One of the things that I did ask Brad was to to follow up follow up with the league schools, find out exactly who has turf football, who has turf soccer, and what each of the facilities cost them. So even before we get an estimate, we kind of have an idea of of what our threshold is in terms of of turfing both. Certainly, I think that if we were to do both, there would be a discount in price because you'd only have to pay one time for somebody to come in. There would be lots of lots of opportunities there for savings.
Two things. One, I would like to see if they if we go through with this with the soccer field, that we at least make it somewhat level.
Yeah, that it's not a bowl.
Downhill towards the football field.
Sure.
And I've you and I have talked about this, but that's the way I can say it for everybody else. Pipe dream, I would love to see like all of our athletic teams on campus someday, that being tennis, baseball, softball. It would just be nice to that nobody had to travel off campus.
It would be really nice.
I know that's way down there, but.
The turfing of both facilities provides a couple of things, getting us closer to that to that dream. One, soccer currently goes off campus. We've done some things here in this in this area to allow soccer over here. It's still not a very good field, right? It's not a great practice facility, but it does keep them from having to drive to the north side of town. Tennis, baseball, and softball, and we'll never get golf here, but tennis, baseball, and softball are are then the only ones that are left. Those would have to be very significant projects for us to 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 start taking a look at. One of the things, if you look at the the historical aspect of our bonds, our district has passed a bond about every ten years. If you if you continue to go back, about every ten years, there's been a bond referendum. That window for us opens up again in another five years, which nobody wants to go down that road, right? But it doesn't mean that in another ten years or so, our facility should still be really good. I mean, really, really good. We shouldn't have really any any spatial issues in terms of our building issues that we would have to address, which might mean at that point in time, at ten years down the road from here, maybe I'm the superintendent, maybe I'm not, but maybe that's when we begin to have some conversations about how we do that and bring all of those athletic facilities into into one area because I certainly think that it would be a benefit to our kids, absolutely a benefit to our kids.
I'm I'm in favor of looking at it because I think also you allow a lot of other entities onto that deal. Band gets to use them and other PE gets to use them on a daily basis versus once a week. So I think there's a lot of plus if you can do it. But I'm also would be interested in to know what it takes to maintain like our parking lots and oil them and tuck point our buildings. Yeah, I think we also owe it to our patrons, like you said, to make sure that we're saying that we're doing everything to the current facility. So if there's a parking lot that needs to be oiled or a tuck point needs to be done on a building, I'd rather roll that in at the same time.
I can tell you that from a capital budget, Terry and I just went over our five-year plan, the oiling and maintaining of our parking lots is already included in our capital budgets. So it's a it's a piece of what is already going to be accomplished there, and certainly that falls well within our our range in terms of that capital budget. But we can look at all of those things and make sure that we're ready to go. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know the life expectancy of the turf field?
It used to be ten years, but it's it's surpassed that now. But even at ten years, when when you start looking at the cost of what we're paying for for water, for a full-time staff member to maintain them, for paint, for fertilizer, for all of the, we get pretty close to paying for it anyways. So it 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 gets pretty expensive to have grass fields and to keep them nice and maintain them. And then every time it rains, we wind up telling people that they can't utilize those fields. You know, if it's rain, we tell our band kids, don't go out there, right? Because we don't we don't want it torn up for the football game because we want it to look nice when everybody walks into the stadium and they look down upon that field when they walk in and they see it all torn up. The question is, well, I wish we could have turf. Because at this point, again, everybody's walking into those other stadiums that have them, and they recognize how great a turf field looks all the time, all the time. It looks great. So it is important, I think, that we we start looking at those things and try to do the best we can.
When I thought we only had six thousand dollars left, I thought we could have a pizza party. It was just an idea.
We could have one heck of a pizza party for six grand.
I was just thinking, I mean, all the staff's endured whatever, and I mean, plus I'm hungry right now, so.
We can get out of here pretty quick. We don't have much left. Any other questions about this? If not, then what we'll do over the course of the next week or two is we'll contact those turf companies and have them come in and at least give us a a an estimate, and that's what we'll call it. I don't want to get into big conversations about we want this and we want this. I want an estimate, an overview, a forty-thousand-foot view of what it would cost to do both. I certainly don't want to lead any of those companies on as to as to believe that they've got some inside track to to land that contract. But we'll see what we'll see what they can do.
Is turf going to fix the fact that we built the soccer field over a big drainage ditch?
It will if we do what Chris talked about and raise it up.
Yep.
Which is really what needs to happen.
When they do that, they can put all that under drainage in, and it'll all just disappear underground.
Go right out.
And they go out over this way.
Yep, yes. Yep, so we can fix we can fix all of that, which we should have done a long time ago.
Turf fields are much better draining water.
Yep.
Drain amazingly.
She had it in her house.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, let's talk about enrollment. So there have been lots of discussion, if you look at the class size one. I wanted to to kind of show you, there's been lots of conversation about class sizes, the especially at the elementaries. The average class size still at our elementary is about eighteen students per class. And if you scroll over to the right, you can see how we came up with that with that number. But average class size in nineteen twenty, and you can see how it compared to eighteen and nineteen. So the one on the left that says nineteen and twenty is actually, oh, yeah, you can't see, that one is eighteen, nineteen, and the one to the right is nineteen and twenty. So you see that in any one of those classes, the only one that really had significant change was second grade going from about sixteen students per class to about twenty and a half students per class, which still falls well within the guidelines that the district created in terms of class sizes. We do have a declining enrollment issue. If you look at the overview piece, Dean, if you click on it, this is this is what KASB has projected our enrollment. And so currently, in the nineteen twenty year, which you can see right here, says that we are projected enrollment of twenty-four hundred sixty-nine students. Our actual enrollment as of yesterday was twenty-four forty. So far below that. The same at the end of the school year last year, we were at twenty-four eighty-eight. So we have decreased forty-eight students over the course of the summer, which is significant. Now, the positive thing for us from a monetary standpoint is that this year, we're we're seeing forty-four hundred dollars thirty-six, four thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars base state aid per pupil, right? Which means that we saw a fairly significant increase based on where we were at last year, which has been positive, and we were able to do great salary increases and and those types of things. If we see a student drop again like we saw this year and puts us behind sixty kids, seventy kids, we will still see an increase in funding yes next year because it jumps from forty-four thirty-six to forty-five sixty-nine, but that increase in funding will not be nearly as substantial. We'll be talking about like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase versus a five-hundred thousand dollar increase. So there was there's lots of worry about whether or not we can continue to maintain these things. We're still going to see new dollars coming in. We're just not going to see them at the rate that we thought we were initially. It looks like twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, you begin to see this number stabilize. Right, we dropped down to three sixty-eight, back up to twenty-three seventy-two. Even at twenty-three seventy-two, that's a hundred student difference from where we're at today, where we would be in four or five years. Losing a hundred students is substantial. But again, that increase in funding that we're seeing has allowed us to maintain and still see new dollars. So I don't want anybody to get overly zealous about, oh, my God, the sky is falling. It is not. But what it does mean is that we have to be very conscious about our spending. There even though the state will be talking about new dollars coming in, hey, you've got new dollars. Hey, we increased the budget by five percent, so everybody should see a five percent raise. That is not going to be the case for USD two ninety. Our decreasing enrollment is going to have a very significant impact upon where we're going to be, and ultimately, it is beginning to impact where we're at, class sizes and things like that. We decreased five staff members at the elementary schools last year, and we still see pretty small class sizes. And so as we see that change in enrollment, we have to continue to have some conversations about how we allocate our resources, our dollars, to best provide the services that our students need. I just wanted to have this conversation. There's no action tonight, but I wanted you to be able to see the information that we look at as we start trying to determine the budgets and the authorities that we have within our budgets to maintain the resources that we provide for our kids. Okay? Questions about enrollment and enrollment sizes? And you guys have I've kind of shared these numbers over the course of of time, so hopefully they're not a surprise to anybody. Anything else? Okay, so let's do core beliefs as we get here to the end, unless anybody has any other questions about class size. Okay, I'm going to bring you back down here to finish the core beliefs piece. So you have a little sticky note on a table down here. If you would find your spot, we ought to be able to do this in about ten minutes, maybe. Possibly be out of here by eight o'clock.
Why what's eight o'clock?
Life, life is happening at eight o'clock.
Oh, you gotta make it at least eight-thirty because then my kid's being dead.
Okay, so if you remember last time, Susan, you're, oh, actually, Susan, how about you go here, can you move this here? How you doing? Jamie, you're over there. So if you remember last time, we had decided that the first three core beliefs we were going to keep, right? They were talking about finance and community and so on and so forth. What we really were going to change was involving student learning and staff development. So what we did was took took some sticky notes and we wrote down your ideas on what it was important for us to do as a board to ensure staff development.
to ensure staff development and ensure student learning. Correct? Then we hung those on the board and everybody went over there and they grouped them together. So yours should be grouped and like thoughts, but maybe someplace that has a couple of outliers on it. Okay, so your role tonight, to finish this up, is that in your group, your job is to write a statement that encompasses those beliefs about student learning or about staff development. And that statement, it will they share between groups and if both groups can agree to them, that becomes a core belief. Does that make sense? Any questions about the process? Okay, your job as a group, look at the groupings, write a single statement about those groupings, about yours to carry.
So.
So.
This is something.
We have eight members and all eight of you. Uh. Okay. You guys want a hesitant spot? Back up there, finish this up.
I think it's crazy.
How you doing, sir?
Free for nap.
Yeah. Alright, just so that we can wrap this up here. Our intent was to, um, develop two core beliefs in terms of staff development and student learning. And the staff development belief was to provide quality staff development and support in order to equip them with tools needed to enhance student learning. It's the one that we've all agreed upon, correct?
Correct.
Okay, student learning. USD two ninety will equip highly qualified staff with rigorous curriculum that is evidence-based to provide a dynamic learning experience, which gives the students the tools for success. Okay, so two pretty good core beliefs. Alright, so what will happen next is that we will finish up the board handbook. We will present it next time for conclusion and approval of the board, but these will be the final two core beliefs that exist within it. And we'll kind of put that thing, um, to bed and begin to utilize it as the main handbook for USD two ninety Board of Education once it is approved by this board. Okay, any questions about this or the process?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. I appreciate you very much for going through that with me.
Alright, so we are moving on to board reports. Anyone have something to share? Uh, I will say I went a couple of weeks ago to the Eggs and Issues. Um, David Tolan, uh, from the Department of Commerce spoke about his plans to rebuild, um, the state's economic development. And I think it's really, it was interesting to see how, um, back in the nineties, he played the theme song that Kansas used to have and I'm not going to sing it for you. But, uh, it's that really catchy one that you can't get out of your head. They had, uh, probably up to, I want to say up to twenty, I don't have the numbers in front of me, representatives across the state and internationally, getting businesses to look at Kansas to move here. And they are down to, I think now, one internationally and I think there were three nationwide. So that's the cuts that have happened over the last few years to that department. Um, but now they are rebuilding. They have, have new money coming back in and they really are staffing that and trying to get more, um, people around to bring businesses in. And I think obviously with our declining enrollment, that's something that's going to be really important, um, to us as we build and bring in more businesses, um, and, and see our area expand. So it was an interesting presentation. And we do not have any, an executive session for personnel, uh, tonight, but you do have a personnel report that you've been presented with. Is there a motion to accept or approve the personnel report?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your red hand. And that passes seven zero. And we are down to announcements.
Alright, a lot of big things coming up. Day on the farm is tomorrow. Uh, so we'll have lots of kiddos, uh, out at Sylvester Farms, uh, learning a lot of great things. Uh, September fifteenth, which is Sunday, is the teacher of the year, uh, in Topeka. So we will, um, honor Randy Helgett as well as Katie Carson as our two nominees for the teacher of the year. Two very deserving, uh, teachers for that, uh, that nomination. Senior day on the job is coming up on September seventeenth. It will be senior and junior day on the job, uh, this year as we begin to make some transitions there. Uh, and then the day after that is NHS induction, if anybody is interested in going to that. I did want to put something down the road out there in terms of the wall of honor dinner. It's typically one where some board members attend. If you're interested, we'll get you your ticket to go to the wall of honor, but it will be Thursday, October seventeenth. I'm currently having middle school and high school talk about making some changes because that is also the, um, middle school vocal concert on October seventeenth. We'd like to not have those two things overlap, so we'll see if we can't make some changes there to, uh, to benefit everybody and be able to go to both if you're interested. So those are our announcements.
Alright, thank you. Well, it's time, uh, we've finished. If there's a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.